This conference will now be recorded.
Okay, it is six o'clock. This is Thursday, April the 11th, 2024. We do have a quorum. Our council meeting will now come to order. If I can ask you to stand. And Pastor Van Zant is going to... Lead us in for...
Good bell, your heads and close your eyes. Dear and Father, I thank you for this day and I thank you for that you blessed us with. Lord, I pray that you'll please us continue to be with the city and I pray that you'll please us be with our city council as they continue to make the best possible decisions for the city. Lord, I pray that you'll please us guide them and I pray that you'll lead them. I pray that you'll put your hand upon them, especially upon the mayor and the city administrator. Lord, I pray that you'll please us also be with the fire chief and our police chief. And those that they are in charge of, I pray that you'll please us give them liberty, give them protection, and I pray that you'll please us bring them home safely to their families, Lord. Lord, I thank you for this day and ask all these things in Jesus' name.
Thank you Pastor Van Zant. Okay, public comments. Number one, the council is not permitted to take action or discuss any comments made to the council at this time concerning an item not listed on the agenda. However, they may make a statement of fact regarding the item or policy. They may also ask if the item be placed on a future agenda or direct the city administrator to contact the individual to address. Public comments require the speaker to submit the sign up form to the city secretary. Prior to the meeting are limited to three minutes and the form must identify each subject the speaker plans to present. There will be no yielding of time to another person engaging in verbal attacks. Or comments intended to insult or slander any individual shall be caused for removal from council chambers. Okay, and what you got?
All right, our only speaker tonight is Donna DiGarmo regarding bonds.
Is it on? Yes, it is. Okay, my name is Donna DiGarmo. I live in Palm Point, 104 Kensington, New York. I wanted to discuss the bonds tonight because I've been not at home too much because I've had some issues with my house. But when I came home the other day, as I was driving into Palm Point, it says vote no on the bonds. It'll raise taxes. And down in the corner too, it looked like maybe they might be insinuating also veterans or disabled veterans. So what I want to say is, and for those who are not here, I'm one of the old ones. My taxes are not going to go up, to my knowledge. Disabled veterans, I know for fact, and I'm sorry to say that if a veteran is disabled, they get help with their taxes. And I know this because of my son. And I've been to an council meeting, our open meeting, town meeting, and learned some horrible facts. And I could only wish that every one of you out there listening would come to the next council meeting, or town meeting, to hear some of these facts. And I want to say that, you know, somebody indicated that that has nothing to do with water and stuff like that, because we are struggling for water also. But it does, you know? When you get something like that that overflows, it goes into the creeks, it goes into the rivers. It goes, and then it comes to your house as drinking water. Is this what you really want? I mean, yes, the younger people are going to have to pay a price. But I can honestly say that we've had people in the past stand up and say, I don't care, I will pay it. This really needs to get done. And just a personal opinion, most of these people live in three or $400,000 homes, so I don't think that they will stress too much to be able to pay their taxes. I'm not sure. But we need these bonds to pass. There's no time left for grants. There's no time left to join up with another city and see what can happen. We are just out of time, people. We are out of time. We need money. The city needs money. We need to get these things fixed. And for those of you that don't know it, when that facility overflows because of all the rain, it is our city workers that go out there and have to skim the human experiments and things like that off of this land and off of this facility and bag it up. And then we have to pay to get that stuff taken away. So I just really, please, 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 come to the council and listen.
She's given me, she's given me the time.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay, let's see. We've got announcements. Citizen Police Academy, April 16th at 6:30. April 18th, 2024, city council meeting at six o'clock. And that was moved up because we've got early voting starting on the 26th of April. Or no, it's 26th? 22nd of April is when early voting starts. That's what it has on here. April 22nd through April 26th, early voting at the community center. April 27th, 2024, the big event with Northwest ISD. And then May 4th, 2024 is our election day. And I think Mr. Loftus had some comments he wanted to make.
Yes, this is relative to the Rome Community Library. The library is applying for a grant to make improvements for accessibility at the library. There will be a focus group on April 16th at 1:00 P.M. And who we'd like to have at the focus group are individuals with mobility challenges so that they can give us direct feedback on their needs relative to improvements in the library for accessibility. So again, that's April 16th at 1:00 P.M. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Loftus. Any other announcements?
Actually, I have one. On April 25th, Thursday, if y'all are out near 1:14 or 35, we're putting on that Medal of Honor escort again where we escort the Medal of Honor recipients from the FFW Airport to Gainesville. And our scheduled time to leave is about four o'clock, but really you can line up anywhere on 1:14 or 35 and you'll see us come through. Usually stretches about 10 miles long, and we're going to have a ton of riders this year.
And I didn't see it on the agenda, but I think if you're on social media, most people realize now that Tech Star is going to be closing the bridge that's between Dairy Queen and 3433 beginning on April 15th. And it is, they propose that it will be closed for five months? Okay, anybody have anything else to add?
I do. We've missed the April 17th meeting that we have, which is next Wednesday evening for the next town hall discussion. Just to remind everyone, that's staff led so that you can ask questions about public infrastructure as it relates to the work that we have been doing in our facility. So everyone is welcome to attend that. It's, it's very relaxed. It's a question and answer type environment. So if you have questions, please come.
All right.
I have one, Mayor Mitchell.
Yes.
Also, we'll have early voting on April 29th and 30th, which is the Monday and Tuesday following the date listed on the agenda. 29th and 30th from, I'm sorry, what were the hours? Eight to five.
So the 29th and the 30th of April will also have early voting from eight to five. Okay, thank you. All right, let's go to consent agenda. Elections contract. And I think if we can just get motion...
I'm making motion to accept the consent agenda. I did have a question about the reports too, if that's up next.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, monthly staff reports and board minutes.
Okay.
I had a question on the public works staff reports. It shows the East Plant, the volume going through. That is 2.177 million gallons. And the West Plant is 4.3 million gallons. It's double. What, is that because there's more homes going to that one or?
There's more, during the rain events, there's more ionized. The rainwater seeping down to the clay tile lines and manholes.
Okay.
So that's causing a double, double amount of volume?
Approximately, yes. It's about the same amount of homes on either plant, so they should relatively be within the same number of two million, maybe a little less. East Plant still gets ionized, but nowhere near as much as the West.
Okay.
All right, regular agenda. Number one, Prairie View Elementary School site plan. And that's Northwest Independent School District. And I bet it's the East Plant. Come and talk.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor, Council. My name is Philip Reeves, address is 5237 North Riverside Drive, Delaware, Texas. 76137. I'm here representing Tignall Perkins, a civilian engineer for Northwest ISD. As you guys are aware, Northwest ISD passed a bond back in 2021 last year. And as part of the bond program, Prairie View Elementary School was listed as a replacement campus. And the site plan that has been presented to staff and also to council shows a new building for Prairie View Elementary School. Plan is to start construction with Prairie View, the new building here shortly, next couple of months. Start construction with the new building. The new building will go construction for over a year. And then the summer of 2025, the existing building will be demoed and additional parking areas will be added. Plan is to start the school and the new building in August of 2025. Here to answer any questions you may have in reference to the site.
This is just making approval for the site plan? Is that what we're doing?
Thank you, Ms. Ty. So this was actually before P&amp;Z at our last meeting at the first of this month. And so the school is already zoned for educational purposes and uses. And so the site plan, as long as they meet the setback requirements and our other zoning ordinances, et cetera, that are on the books, then this is review of that site plan and approval therein. They have met, you will see in your packet, there's a letter from Kimberly Horn that they had met pretty much all of the requirements from the standpoint of what Kimberly Horn reviewed from the engineer. So it was unanimously sent forward to council tonight for your approval.
So I see there's variances in here also. Those were...
They will bring the light variances back because one of the things that we want to make sure of is since this location for the school is going to be considerably closer to the homes there that back up to that site. Staff did not feel like that that type of variance needed to go through without going through all of the proper channels and the ZBA either looking at that through the lens of the council's seat or bringing it to council and P&amp;Z separate. And we could not get all of those aligned to come through at one time. So we've separated the two.
So as a former Northwest ISD here, I don't know who's the best one to answer the question, but I thought that the original plan was to keep the old Prairie View Elementary and use that for an early childhood education center. So, but things change, so what you got?
Hello, Sarah Stewart, Executive Director of Planning for Northwest ISD. That was the initial plan was to be able to keep that building and use it as an early childhood center. Unfortunately, with this lot, with the site, the building is going into, the playground, parking is going into the existing building. And what we are doing when it comes to designing an early childhood center, it's not going to fit in that space, in that building the way we want to do the design of the early childhood center. We're actually doing round up for our early childhood centers so we can make them the way we would like them to educate our kids.
So is the plan still to have an early childhood center on that site?
No, we are looking at other properties in this area to build that.
One of the other things...
We just haven't purchased it yet, so I can't tell you where it is.
Okay, that's fine.
One of the other things that we've talked with their engineering firm and the school representatives is kind of the traffic flow. And they've been very mindful of trying to get as much of that off the street and into the interior of that facility to try and limit the impact to those who are passing up and down F and 34, 33, or through that neighborhood. So just to be mindful, that is something that we've talked about with their team.
Sarah, I'm also curious because I live in the neighborhood that's right near my Prairie View Elementary, Chisholm. So am I correct in saying the original Prairie View was not built for that 850 students? What we're building our elementary schools for now? Correct. So the current parking lot, parking situation and all that traffic was never meant to withstand the amount of students that were going through there right now? And so the new site will have driveways, front and back, to better sustain the parking and the traffic flow to keep them off the streets?
Yes, ma'am, we do with every building queuing study to ensure that we are getting enough cars off the street, that we're stacking when it comes to parent pickup and drop off. We have been doing the parents in the front of the building, buses in the back, and both front and back have parking for the parents and that parking for the staff.
Talking about for the new building, not for the existing during construction time?
Correct. But we have, we have done some modifications to the front of the building to add more parking because we have, we're struggling, y'all know the traffic flow. So we made the parking lot between Chisholm and Medland where buses park so kids can safely get into the building and we don't have parents park, driving through that area. We've extended the front drive to Chisholm with your subdivision, yes. And we also have extra parking on the east side of that for stack of lighting and a safe way to get to the building. So we have, I believe there's four lanes coming along the road and then they merged to, or one front of the building.
Right, I think my neighbors are, are pleased with how that is right now, but we just want to be sure that the new plan for the new building is going to continue to keep that traffic off the street.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
And so I know we don't have a lot of control over this, but do y'all have some sort of buffer in between the school and where the houses are? I can't...
So normally when we do a, a school site next to an actual homes, and if it's on our playground where kids are running around, we do a concrete six foot wall, a structured one, and that's to protect the kids. We've had incidents where kids will go up to a fence where there's a dog and they put their hand through the hole in the fence and things happen. So we want to protect the kids. And so we will put a buffer when it comes to that screening on our playgrounds.
We need approval. We need to make a motion to approve the site plan. Is that...
Yes.
So, same.
A second.
You did motion, okay. And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Northwest voters, for coming to talk to us. Number two, draft the bond advisory committee bylaws. I think that's in your packet.
Well, thank you, Mayor. So you do have in the packet the bylaws as requested. The city attorney's office drafted these for you, and so they're in there for review. We do have a motion, if you all are interested in approving, or excuse me, a resolution that if you want to approve those, if you have other questions. There are some things on here that need some blanks filled in, like the terms of office for the officers. I'm not sure if you have specific questions about the bylaws. We have reviewed these at a very high level. They, I believe, were based off of a similar structure out of the city of Austin. You'll see that the committee is made up of five members appointed by council. Each member serves for a term of two years and can be removed from the council at will as you all are the governing body for this and the oversight for that. Again, it also allows for any member officer to resign at any time. And it has some other specifics in there about signing in when they have meetings. It also talks about officers of this committee, a chair and a vice chair. They should be elected annually by majority vote. It looks like there's in here for your review, a term of a one-year period beginning on whichever date the committee is formed and then running for a year if that is what you'd like to do or you need to consider it running with a calendar year or fiscal year, whatever council's choice is in that particular area. It also talks about a committee member not holding more than one office at a time. And that, of course, that the chair would preside at the meeting. Talks about having agendas, some of the information as it relates to the meetings themselves and how they're conducted, whether three committee members constitutes a quorum because you would have to have that. And that we would have a staff liaison appointed or a part of this committee so that we can keep track of things that they're doing and support that they may or may not need. I kind of like that it says if the meeting continues till 10, we'll adjourn and come back the next day because once you get later on in the evening, it's not nearly as effective. So I'm sure Carvin can answer any questions that we have on this. And I'm happy to fill in the blanks with the resolution and/or the bylaws if you want to talk about that this evening.
Yeah, there's a condition in there that this committee is subject to the Sunshine laws. Did I read that? Yeah, and that's what my concern was, to make sure that this committee was not subject to those laws since they were just an advisory role. Yeah, well, the point being that I think that those type of laws tend to divide us and cause things to move slower. To me, that's part of the purpose of this committee is to get some community unity. Yeah, I'm trying to go look at it right now. I looked at it earlier and I thought I saw something. Open meetings is what it's...
Open meetings is, we have made...
Okay, so that's not the same thing? Okay, thank you.
Now, the Open Meetings Act is your prerogative as an advisory committee. By law, they're not to be part of the committee. But generally, again, we took this from Austin example. They did, so that's a requirement. That's a requirement. That's not a requirement.
My opinion is to not, not because we wouldn't advertise those meetings, but because sometimes, you know, things can happen and something doesn't get on the agenda or so many days. And I wouldn't want that to hinder because all of the people serving on this committee are going to be volunteers. But that's my thought.
That's A, Article 6 meeting.
And that's just the will of the council, how it currently wants to do that if you want to.
Yeah.
I mean, I would agree with that too.
From a staff perspective, that will require a considerable higher level of staff interaction to post the agendas, keep the minutes, get them approved and get them back. That's much more formal than what you all were originally discussing. We certainly can post these meetings on our city website and put it on our city calendar and anybody is welcome to attend. That would not be the issue at all. But if you put the formality with it, then that is really going to increase the level of involvement and time that staff is going to need to dedicate to this effort. So we just need direction on that.
And because you will, or a staff liaison will be there, that information will come to us, which becomes a formal interaction when it comes to the information to you. You don't necessarily need it for the advisory committee.
So essentially, we're going to take out then the section A under Article 6 meeting? Do you need a vote?
If you choose to vote on this tonight, it definitely takes to approve these bylaws. We'll need to fill in the blanks. So whoever makes that motion will need to look at the force and give us the rights and then put it in section 6. But that's not a... You want to think about it before you please?
Well, and being mindful, our next meeting is a week from today. So if you give us direction, we can clean it up and bring it back next Thursday. And then you've got a clean copy from which to look at and approve. So that's certainly not an issue to do either.
I'm sorry, what was the other section that you were looking up to change? Was there another section you talked about? I picked up the blanks. At the top here, it says for a term of two years, but down here I thought it was a term for a year. Okay. Okay. This needs to be...
Here's, here's my thinking. So a lot of times committees like this are used for long-range planning. And so for there to be, we know the value in having some historical perspective and for there to be that continuance of a committee can be helpful. So I, I don't have a problem with it being open-ended.
I don't think there's a term limit. I think it's just they would be reappointed every two years. And much like the mayor pro tem, the chair and the vice chair would be elected each year, which is the same mirroring image of what you all do when we have an election. So for instance, in May, if we have turnover on council, then we will, we'll definitely reelect mayor pro tem regardless. But then you will have those people change those seats. But there's nothing in here that precludes them from serving longer than two years.
I also wonder about the makeup of the committee. How many did you say? Five? I just think the more people that are knowledgeable and have an understanding of what's happening within the city, the better it is for us.
Can we make it flexible then between five and seven? So if you, so you can take this back and make the changes? Or would you like us to make a motion with the changes and have it table until next week?
That's what I like. Why not just let me make the changes and get them back to you and then you can vote on a final version? I'm supposed to be talking to Mike. I know you, you're right, you're supposed to keep me on task. Does that make sense? I mean, I can go back and make those changes and I can get them back to the city administrator and she can get them out to you pretty quick. You can look at them and then if they're, or if I make a mistake or if there's some edits or something, we can do that the night of, next Thursday night.
Okay. So table length, or is it gonna now, or do it next week?
I think table would be appropriate for bringing back next week.
I move we table this until next meeting.
Okay. I'm sticking on that?
Second.
Aye.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Number three, bond fax documents.
Thank you, Mayor. So this is on the agenda again for council to review. If you have any questions or there's anything that I can clarify on the FAQs that we put together. These, as I mentioned to you, were reviewed by the bond attorney for the city of Rome. And they meet the requirements that the bond attorney has given us. I will call out that I had two numbers incorrect on the back. I apparently got pretty... I apparently got pretty happy with the keys and showed it as a .04238 if all three passed. And that makes it four cents, which would be great if we could get it for that number. But it's actually 42 cents all in all if all three are passed when we are fully paying for the bonds. So I've updated that information. As I mentioned, we will have another town hall on the 17th of April. And I will have copies of these prepared and ready for folks to receive when they come to that meeting. We will also be posting these on social media as well as our city's website. So I'm happy to entertain any questions or provide any clarity on the information contained
I'm not a bond counsel, but I would definitely rely on Mr. Dransfield. He's real good. He hates interviews and I recommend you follow him. It's a highly regulated area.
So if we had additional questions, do we want to give those to you at a later time? Or...
Questions to be included on the FAQ or just questions in general? I can, you can give those to me and I can certainly draft a response and send them to Mr. Dransfield to be reviewed and we can amend the FAQs. But anything that I put together would go back through Mr. Dransfield because he is the expert in this particular area. And we want to make sure that we are meeting all the requirements that the state has laid out for what the council can and cannot do because, you know, those can be pretty lengthy.
Okay, these are just questions and I might just propose them for the town hall then.
Do we need an action on this? Any other comments? We'll move on. Okay. Let's go to number four. The packet said that was number five. Agenda item number five, facts. All right. Number four, co-sponsoring guidelines.
Thank you, Mayor. So this is something that has been discussed by council a couple of times. And we recently had direction from Mrs. King to co-sponsor the Easter egg event that was held by Mrs. Mize and a group of volunteers within the city. It's been brought to my attention that Mrs. Mize did come in on the Friday before the event and paid the fee that would normally be associated. And we need to get council direction. When the city co-sponsors an event with someone, it would be my recommendation to you all as we draft this policy that we not charge that participation fee or the renting of the park fee if you were. But at the time, we were very close to the event occurring and I didn't get clear direction. So I've brought this back to you all. We have the check that Mrs. Mize submitted to the city. We have not cashed that as of yet. So it would be my recommendation that we, excuse me, that we return the check to her. And as we continue to get the policies drafted and get them approved by council, then we could codify that in the actual document.
I move that we waive fees when the city is co-sponsoring any event.
And all in favor?
Aye. Do you need direction on what to do with Miss Mize's check?
No, ma'am.
All right, number five, city hall staffing levels.
Thank you, Mayor. This is an item that I'm bringing forward for council review in light of some changes that we have at city hall as it relates to staffing and some positions. As we discussed at our last meeting, our city secretary has submitted her resignation and will be leaving us towards the end of May. So you do have in your packet a suggested configuration of positions that I would like to put before you all for consideration. In the agenda commentary or in the memo that I prepared for you back on March 28th, you do see that the current configuration, we have a city secretary position. We had a finance specialist, someone filling that role. And then we are using a variety of consultants to support the person that was in that finance specialist position. So it does have a total or an estimated total of what that costs us annually. I would say that's a very conservative total. It depends on what kind of assistance we need from the consultants, whether that money goes up or down based on any given fiscal year. I have listed some options there for you. If we wanted to continue to employ the city secretary position, which I would highly recommend, as well as add potentially someone that is an accountant, that actually has a degree in accounting, that could do some of the work that the consultants are currently handling on our behalf and could bring a little bit different approach to our finances and assist me in several things that I would like to bring forward for council on a quarterly, if not monthly basis, depending upon the direction that we receive. You will see that if we went that direction and we were able to lower the use of consultants, that it's about the same amount of money, one way or the other, from the standpoint of the general fund. There's also an option on here to employ a city secretary, administrative support for the front and using consultants. That's a little bit less expensive, but it doesn't bring us any of the knowledge base that we could use in the financial realm for the city. So that would not be my first recommendation to you, but this is at council's discretion. If you look on the back of the agenda commentary, the recommendation that I would present to you would be option number three or option number one. And option number three is the city secretary position would be filled. We do have that advertised as directed at the last meeting, that we would look for an accountant position that could be of service to the city and then a full-time administrative support person for the walk-in traffic and just the general duties that are associated, both in the municipal court and in the utility billing area and permitting area. We have seen a very, we've seen a high level of traffic in city hall, more so in the last year than we had before. And talking to both those individuals that are in those positions, they, there's no redundancy. So if Christie's out of the office, we have very limited ability to provide backup for the municipal court. Same thing goes when Julie is out of the office. There's very limited knowledge and time allowed to be of help for utility billing and/or permitting because that's become, as I said, busier and a lot more complex. So showing the information that you see there, it's a change in our budgeted numbers. It wouldn't have as much of an impact this year because it's not a full year of the funds coming forward. But I would entertain any conversation that council may have about those two options. Option two is really not, it is an option. It is not, in my opinion, the best option. When we utilize consultants, one, it is, at least for the bulk of the work, you still have to manage those consultants. It's not as if they are an employee that's directly under your care and supervision and that is a part of creating the efforts going forward for the city of Rome. So we do have consultant teams that we could rely on, but I do think it would exceed the $30,000 that is shown here conservatively for that. And it also assumes that the person in the city secretary position will handle accounts payable and accounts receivable. And as we continue to get busy and have other items in the office, I'm not sure to what effect that will be prudent on our behalf. So I would recommend that we look at option one or option number three.
Okay, so there's a $60,000 difference between option one and three. What does that do to the budget?
Well, as far as the budget's concerned, we do have capacity within our general fund to, I don't want to say absorb, but to expend those funds in this area. In having some discussion and some thought from the time that we met the last time in executive session until now, what we might want to do is fill the city secretary in the accountant position and then hold on the administrative support and see how that works. Because we do have other positions within the city that are needed in fire and police. So we need to look at that holistically and that could come as a part of our larger budget discussion. But just know that we are getting to a saturation point at city hall with what we have from the standpoint of the current staffing levels, just given the complexity and the sheer number of people that are coming in each day and needing support from the folks in the front office.
I think that's a good idea. I'm going to go ahead and make a motion for option number
Now, you mentioned holding off on the full-time admin.
It's thinking to delay until we got the first two positions onboard.
So in the hybrid type arrangement, we could choose option three and with the holding off on the full-time admin until the next fiscal year, correct?
Possibly, yes. I would say that's six months from now. And dependent upon how these two positions are filled, we may not be able to wait six months for that position. That's my concern.
What are your thoughts about a part-time admin there?
It's possible.
With option three?
It's certainly a possibility. You might want to hear from someone else who works in city hall who is sitting in the audience.
Do you have any input on this, Christie?
I will tell you that both Julie and Christie do a Herculean effort with what they're given in that office on a daily basis and they do it with such joy and such customer service. But I also know that they are getting very overwhelmed with the sheer amount of folks that are coming in and all of the requirements that they have to meet. And so I would like Christie to speak on behalf as well. She might be able to shed some more light on this.
We've talked for a couple of years, I think, about having an admin assistant. This is a really good week for this topic to come up. Not going over anybody's HIPAA, but Julie has been really sick since last Wednesday. She is on the up. She's fine. Nothing contagious, but she's been sick. Shayna, I can answer the phones. When we had a previous utility billing system, I could back her up all day long on payments, same as she could do for me on the previous court software system. We could back each other up all day long on taking payments, seeing each other's systems. But when the city went to STW and I went to Net Data, we don't share systems. I only have inquiry abilities on STW. And we have to have, we have to pay for more than two licenses for my software. So I have one on my court system that work, but I also have, I mean, on my computer, but I also had a laptop that I bring here. Now that the city has gone to desktop systems, I may be able to get a license put on Julie's or the admin assistant because the laptop I use here is so slow. I just tried it today, but our laptops are now portable. However, this week, I have not been able to back Julie up on payments unless they've been cash or checks. Shayna has had to do all of the credit card payments. We've had Prairie Butte, so we've had contractors calling about permits and licenses and site plans. They've all had to go to Shayna. We don't have an accounting person to do the payments and the bills and invoices and such. Shayna's been doing all the invoices. Plus the council minutes, or not minutes, agendas. So between she and Amanda, they got the council stuff posted Friday and Monday. Payroll was also on Tuesday. Shayna did payroll. I do court. I stay tremendously busy, but I've been there enough years that it's kind of, I can do it in my sleep, literally in my sleep. So I've helped. I've helped with phone calls. I've offered to help Shayna with anything else I can do. But there are things that I don't have privy to in utility billing, permit, and things like that. I will say when Shayna leaves, we're going to be at a huge disadvantage. She is measurable beyond even her belief. She came onboard to do permits. Joe hired her for permits, I believe. And then Shannon asked for an assistant. So she started backing Shannon up doing journal entries. She has learned everything that she knows being with the city of Rome. She backs me up. When she's gone, it's going to be Julie and I. If I take vacation, Julie's going to be covering court and UB and permits and contracts. Hopefully, we have a finance person by then. If we don't, Amanda and the consultants are going to be bombarded. I don't know how y'all are going to do the bills and get them to the mayor, but we'll figure that out, we at least do. So if there can at least be a part-time assistant, that would be huge. Full-time is great. I'll get to that. But any help is greatly appreciated, especially four days off of vacation. Questions?
Can I resend my motion? I would like to resend my motion.
It's difficult to explain just how busy that office is. And you factor that in with the phone that rings almost incessantly during the day and that we want to make sure that we're providing services to those that call. And we get a lot of calls from folks who think we're New Fairview or some other city. And so we're not just dealing with city of Rome specific calls. So we have to have a pretty broad knowledge. Matter of fact, I talked to a gentleman today who wanted to know about his water and he said he's in Rome, but he's really not. He's in New Fairview. But because it's the Rome post office, everyone makes the assumption it's Rome. And so we become kind of man central for a lot of that stuff. And don't misunderstand me, if you advocate for a full-time administrative assistant, we can use that person. And in the off chance they had any downtime, they would back up public works as well because Jesus is spending an inordinately large amount of time on these reports to CCEQ and trying to keep his record straight. And he is working way more hours than he ought to be working. And we used to have administrative support in city hall and we used to have administrative support in public works. And for whatever reason, those positions were not filled in the past. So if you allocated full-time, I could certainly use that and divide it amongst a variety of different service areas if that was authorized.
Could part of that salary be funded by the utility fund also?
I will need to do some analysis because if you'll recall from the town hall meeting, the capacity in utility fund is not existent right now. So we have to figure out where we could do that because we are funding part of Julie's salary out of utility fund.
Okay, so we're also saying that we're going to cut some of the consultant fees that we've had because we're now hiring.
Absolutely. So what, if we hire someone that has the skills to be an accountant or has a degree as an accountant or even blessedly was a CPA, they could do a lot of the tracking of fixed assets. They could, right now, I've spent the bulk of my week balancing and cross-checking all of the RVR payments that we received for the past year to make sure that we're actually, we're paid for the inspections that were done. That's part of our annual audit process. So that's just for FY '23. If you had someone with that knowledge base, they would be maintaining that as the fiscal year has gone along. They would also be double-checking to make sure that our meter deposits are being handled and being credited to the right account. So there's just a lot of work behind the scenes that that person with just a broader base knowledge could track for us financially. They could also have been of great assistance during all of this work with the debt issuance because Shayna has been working with the bond counsel and the financial advisors to make sure that you see the paper trail that we had to leave on the front door. It's not just here at this location. It's at the police department. It's at city hall. It's everywhere that we're required to notify. And so someone with a little more job knowledge in accounting would be of great assistance. And yes, we would not need to rely on those consultants. For instance, the bank recs, we, as I talked to you all before, the bank recs need to be done and we don't have anybody on staff with that skill set. So we're going to have to use a consultant for that.
And I think that right now, since we've finished the audit for...
FY '22. We're in '23.
For 2022, I think we're in a good place. Things are cleaned up for somebody to come in. I think the timing is right. So I'd like to make a motion that we use general thumb for option three.
I will say.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, let's move on.
Thank you, council. We do appreciate that support.
Number six, ordinance update.
Thank you, Mayor. You also will find this one in your packet. The direction was provided to staff earlier this year when we had some questions about what our ordinances say versus what happens when we have an error in our reporting software system or some sort of technical issue occurs. And you will see in the agenda commentary... technical issue occurs. And you will see in the agenda commentary that I changed one word as per the direction from Council. This ordinance that you have in front of us or in front of you is, I believe, one that Toast would have put together because this looks very much like their format. And so instead of saying that we shall keep written minutes or we shall keep, should, should, excuse me, it's getting late on a Thursday. So it did say the city council commissions and committees, both virtual and in-person, shall be digitally reported, uploaded to the city's YouTube account and kept for 90 days past approval of written minutes. So the proposed change is that the city council commissions and committees, both virtual and in-person, should be digitally recorded, uploaded to the city's YouTube account and kept for a minimum of 90 days because we don't, we haven't removed those. And we do have lots of occasions to go back and look past 90 days to determine direction that Council's given. So the way it was worded kind of gave a direction that after 90 days, you remove it. And that's not really our practice. So those would be the two changes I would recommend that would be in the ordinance.
I think it looks good. This is kind of mirroring the state requirement of just the written minutes, correct?
Correct.
More discussion? Okay, motion?
I make a motion to accept the ordinance. Number is this, 2024? I don't know.
Dash 10.
Dash 10. Motion to adopt. What did I say?
I'll say it.
Favor?
Aye.
Very good. And then number seven, draft for financial policies for the city.
Just a moment, Mayor, and let me get my notes caught up with the cadence of the meeting. So thank you for the segue. This item that is on your agenda this evening is not meant to be approved. It is simply meant to be reviewed by Council. Shayna's going to pull up the slide deck information that you have. As part of our ongoing work in the fiscal service area or our finances, I have not been able to find a comprehensive financial policy on behalf of the city. There have been some things in the past that have been put together, excuse me, or that were put together many years ago. And so I would like to try and review these with you very broadly this evening and bring them back at a future time. For instance, this has not been looked at by our city attorney as of yet, so we would want him to check those over before they're approved. I did pull this information from previous municipalities that I've worked for and then customized it for the City of Rome because we do have some slight differences from some of the larger cities to what we're doing now. If you haven't had a chance to read all the information, we're going to go over the high points in this draft. So just bear with me and I'm happy to answer any questions that you all may have about this. So the purpose and scope of the financial policies that you have in that agenda packet is basically to ensure clear communication between city council, staff, and the community. Your budget document, which is essential and required, is not just a budget document. It's also a communication tool to your community as to what your priorities are as a council and what your community or what the community values from what we are providing service delivery. So when you have those financial policies upon which that budget document rests, it gives that clear direction and it lets council, both existing and incoming, understand what they can expect as far as the finances of the city is concerned and what parameters staff are working under. It also gives the community a clear understanding under what parameters the city staff are working. There are intended outcomes in your draft policy. It covers things such as revenue management, expenditure control, on down to the capital budgeting that you see on this list behind me. Then there are some intended outcomes that go along with this. There are general definitions that you will see in the policy itself that talks about a variety of things relative to budgeting in general. It's not just a very one or two sentence definition. Some of these are a little bit lengthy and provide some additional backup information. The one that I would call attention to for council as it relates to section two or that summary of policy intended outcomes would be the ones as it's related to the user-based or demand-driven fees and service charges because this will be a policy question that you all want to look at as you go through. So user-based fees could be anything like copies and what does it cost us to present one of those? And is that full-cost recovery or is that something that we're going to subsidize through general fund? Open records request, we've dealt with that to some extent to the, I guess, to the capacity that the state law allows us to recover those fees. We have facility usage at some point. If our facilities are in good enough condition that someone wants to be able to rent them, we talked about that briefly with the community center, the senior center that's here in front. We also have if some of our police officers are hired as security for an event at the city park, does council want that to be a full-cost recovery, meaning the person who's doing the hiring pays the fees associated? So that will be a policy discussion that we will want to look at as we go through this process. You also have under section two, item D, enterprise fund rates, you will see that that is listed as full-cost recovery. This is targeted at least to be where the fees that are charged for your water and sewer rates cover the costs of your water and sewer, maintenance and operations and debt, et cetera. We are not currently meeting those qualifications. So that is why it is shown here as a target. When you look at the slide deck that I presented to you all as it related to the utility fund or that enterprise fund through the budget process, I showed you that it was at least in the red half as many times as it was in the black. And when you factored in depreciation of your capital assets, it was always in the red. So the utility fund has not held its own for many years. And so that's something that we show in here as a target and not as it will be or a shall, if you will, for the policy. There's also a highlighted yellow portion in here about the solid waste or trash and refuse pickup. Right now, that is where it's a pass-through. Basically, we're charging what we're getting charged. There are some cities that maintain a little bit of a fund reserve in there. That will be something that we'll want to look at as it relates to a policy conversation. When you look at general administrative charges, that is not something that we are looking to do or something that we have been doing in Rome. That's under section two, item number E. So basically, when a city has or grows large enough, it may centralize things such as electricity if we're all housed in one building. And we may, councils have made the decision in the past to divvy up the electricity bill and a portion, certain percentage of, is it two departments? So you, when you get to what's called program-based budgeting and you want to know how much it costs actually to run public works or police or fire or any specific given area within the city, if you convert your budget or if you augment it with a program-based budget, you would take those general accounting services items like electricity, water, building insurance, coffee fees, if you have a centralized coffee room, supply room, et cetera, and you would augment certain portions to each of those service delivery areas. So if you say, how much does it really cost to run police? Then I can give you that information and say it's X amount of your entire budget and that includes your general service oversight. Generally, that will come into play more when we're all housed in one building because you will have that ability to have the overlap. Right now, since we're all segregated, it's not necessarily needed because each individual location has its own water, utility, electric, et cetera. But that's something to look at. So you also have a section in here about fund balance and retained earnings. You will see that that provides a greater definition. And as we get on in this presentation, one of the things that I'll be asking council as we firm up this policy and get to something that's actually documented and written and approved by council, I'd like to know what your direction is as it relates to retained earnings and fund balance. We've talked about that when it's unassigned. Do you want to go with what most cities do at 90 days in reserves? I generally recommend at least 30 days more than that, if not closer to 60 days more, just in case, especially since we are a small city and our income is not as elastic as some because we don't rely as heavily on sales and use tax. We have a nice balance. But as we continue to grow and our sales and use tax income grows, we'll need to be mindful of that because when the economy turns, that's the first thing that hits. Your ad valorem or your property tax base is basically income inelastic. It doesn't move. It is what it is unless you have a great downturn in the value of the home and the tax rate. But that sales and use tax goes up and down and it fluctuates quite a bit. So we have to be very careful with that particular revenue stream. So looking at that, that will kind of set the baseline, if you will, for some of our policies. Go to the next slide, please. This policy also has an overview of the operating budget and you can see kind of the different sections therein. It basically discusses the framework of what an operating budget is and the preparation process to some extent that goes on behind the scenes. The wording does capture what we're currently doing each year when we prepare the budget and it formalizes any spending requests in the form of service level adjustments. So when I presented the last budget to you, it was basically in what we consider a base budget. And if we were wanting to increase or expand any service delivery or allocate additional resources towards that service area, we showed it as a adjustment to the budget. So that you see what it costs to maintain from year to year. And then if we're going to expand services, you then see what that costs. So it makes a little more sense when you're laying it next to the budget, but this is kind of the policy that that budget's built on. It also does add a component to prepare a five-year financial forecast as it relates to revenue, expenditures, and personnel. I did not find that codified in any of your current policies. Doesn't mean it doesn't exist. It just means as of yet, I haven't found it. So that's why you're getting this brought forward now. It also talks about the legal filing requirements of providing it to the city secretary and the time and the council review, et cetera. So any questions on that piece of this? Then looking further on sections four, five, and six, it does have a portion of your policy that goes to monitoring, oversight, revenue management, and expenditure control. One of the things in this particular area that I will need council direction on is currently, I cannot find that we have a policy that authorizes the city administrator and/or the mayor a certain level of spending if we have an emergency event. I thought I found it earlier, but I have yet to put my hands back on it. So that's something that I'll want some direction on from you all. If, for say, the wastewater treatment plant has a major issue like we had this week and I sent you all an email about the additional expenses that we had to incur, that wasn't budgeted. So we need to know how we're going to handle those emergency events when we're in between a meeting time and we can't get something called because I can't wait a week or 10 days in order for that to come back to council to get that authorization or we're definitely in violation of TCEQ.
I think there is an ordinance. I believe it's under general provisions. I think it was passed a couple of years ago when Michelle Decrick was there.
If you could find that or you're telling me it's in UNICODE, that would be very helpful.
It is in UNICODE and I believe it's in general provision. General provision. I think so.
Well, we'll probably want to review that amount because that's not enough. 5,000 is not enough for an emergency in a city. And I, maybe back when it was approved, that would be the case, but I have seen that anywhere from 25,000 to 50,000. I don't think we need that at this city, given the size of Rome at the moment. But 5,000 is going to be the three tanker trucks we hired were more than that. So that's one area in the policy that we don't have fleshed out that we'll need to look at. In the revenue management section, we do talk about the main revenue sources for the city. It's important to identify those and for everyone to start to become aware of where the City of Rome gets their funding from. We are not a business that sells a widget that I can produce more widgets and therefore raise more funds. We are service-driven only. We are entrusted with the funds from the city as it relates to the ad valorem rate that is approved by the voters and entrusted to us to administer on their behalf at the direction of council. And we have sales and use tax. That is our two main sources of income. We have a variety of other things that come in as you relate to fines and fees, permitting. We do have some meter deposits that can come in, but most of it is driven through those two main sources. It also talks about in expenditure control, you've got the explanation and definitions of what we're looking for there. I want to be very clear with you that none of this is up for approval because it does talk about what council wants to do as it relates to a compensation plan. We've talked about this in light of the budget before, but there's a section in here that says the city will work towards setting a goal that employees will be paid at a level that is within 3% of the median of surveyed benchmark cities. When we talked about the compensation plan in light of this current fiscal year, we, I gave you the percentages from which we were moving staff and from which we were still either in the area or not for given positions. So this is something that we'll want to be very mindful of because it sets policy direction, but we can put a caveat to this as it relates to the budget. So what I've seen a lot of cities do or city councils will say this is their goal, but it is based on budgetary allocations and funding that's available because we don't want to back ourselves into something that we can't live up to. So that would be something that we'd want to determine where is the goal and then how do we allow for variations in our funding levels so that we don't put ourselves in a financial position that's, that we can't reach? Does that make sense? So I've highlighted that because I don't want it to get lost in the information. When you look, would you go to the next slide, please, ma'am? Under the next set of sections, which is on page five of the policy, under fund balance and retained earnings, this particular area, this is where it says 90 to 120 days. So when you look at your policy itself and we determined most, let me rephrase that, several cities use 90 days, especially if they have a robust income stream and they have a much broader tax base than what we currently have in Rome. As I mentioned to you all before, we are still, we do have healthy sales and use tax, but it's not diversified. And we don't have retail. So that's a struggle for us. The ad valorem is again, not as broad as it will be in the future, but it will continue to grow as new homes come online, as new businesses come in, et cetera. But 90 days to me is a little bit lower than I would like to see it. 120 is, for me, would be the minimum recommendation to you all. I'd rather see closer to 150 or 180, but it just depends on where we're sitting. Right now, I can tell you our fund balance exceeds these numbers, both the 90 and the 120. So the last time I checked, we were closer to 300. And so when we are looking at how we repair some of these ground storage water tanks that I showed you all as it related to our February 10th meeting and our water system, we may have some funds in reserve that we could use for that, but we need to be very cautious because we have other ongoing operating expenses that are going to be affected by decisions that are on the ballot for May, for instance, the rollback election. So I'm keeping those back until we figure out what direction we're going to get from the community on that one. There's also a section in your policy as it relates to debt management. It does talk about that we need to review debt management through a multi-year capital planning process or capital improvement plan. We have had one that was presented to us by Kim Lee Horn and we had one prior to that that was done by Jacob Martin. That was several years before that, but I'd like to see a CIP done in tandem with the annual budget every year so that it is being reviewed by council and we are being mindful of planning for the future because that brings us into some of the areas, excuse me, on the next slide that I'll talk about. The debt management section also talks about the type of bonds and it talks about the use of leases in areas where we can lower our ongoing costs. And it talks about refunding opportunities. We have refunded several bonds in the past, but we, I don't see a specific policy that talks about where's our threshold for capture. For instance, are we going to set that at 3.5%, which means you're going to gain at least 3.5% lower payments and/or interest on the bond? Or are we going to set it at something else? So that's something that we'll want to talk to the financial advisor. They currently watch every bond that we have outstanding. They're watching the interest rates and they're letting us know now the current interest rates that we have are set so low, we're not going to get any better. When those roll off later this year and next year, you're not going to get a lower interest rate than what those were done. If any of these pass in May, then they will definitely be watching those as the interest rates change. And as soon as we can lower those interest rates, they will be bringing that forward to council for approval because we want to make sure we're taking advantage of the betterment in the economy as the interest rates come down. So we'll want to look at that through the lens of a policy direction on that item, too. Okay, so then looking at grants and fiscal monitoring, this is fairly self-explanatory. The city does look for grants when they're, when and where they're applicable. We also need to be mindful that if we are applying for grants, sometimes there are matching cash requirements on behalf of the city. Sometimes we have those funds, sometimes we don't. So it just depends on how large of a match you're looking for. One of the other things we need to be mindful of is that if we go out for a grant, I've talked to Chief Estes about this. Say, for instance, if we qualify for a SAFER grant and we're able to hire firefighters through that where the SAFER grant pays for them for three years. At the end of that three years, we either have to terminate the positions or we have to absorb them. I believe in the SAFER grant, Chief, you have to incorporate them in there, don't you? So those are things that as part of your policy directive in and of itself, for current and incoming council and staff, we want to make sure that we have those parameters outlined so that they know what the expectations are. Because if we apply for a grant as it relates to personnel and you come to the end of that at 12 months and then you either have to that at 12 months, and then you either have the option to lay off the person because you've not funded it, then that may not be your best choice. Then looking at the fiscal monitoring component of the policy, this does add quarterly financial reports to council. This is something that has been on my to-do list for almost since the moment I walked in the door, but we need to get this where it, you are reviewing quarterly what the city's finances are doing, and we are not there yet, and that's one of the reasons that we had some conversations about staff direction. It also specifies the use or the option to use consultants and just codifies some of that information in a policy document for council. So last slide then looks at the concept of auditing. It clarifies in writing that the auditing firm works for council directly. Sometimes that gets confused for newly elected individuals. It also states that staff is only the liaison to the auditing team. We don't, they don't work for staff, they work for council. That is your independent report on what staff has done financially each year. So you need to make sure you've got the segregation of those duties. Then looking at the capital budgeting piece, this would codify that we'd have an annual review of the CIP or the capital improvement plan as part of that budgeting process. It should show both funded projects for the bonds that are currently being paid, what were those projects for, and where are we at in the life cycle of that project. It should also, in my opinion, cover unfunded and under discussion projects. Often, it's important to keep in council's view and the communities that in five or 10 years, we're going to need X piece of equipment, and it's, as of right now, it costs Y amount of money. So if you keep that on an unfunded five-year forecast, then you don't lose sight of that, and all of a sudden, you realize you need a million-dollar fire truck, and we haven't saved any money for it. So that's a very important part of evolving our budget as we move forward. One of the other things it also talks about is maintenance and replacement because we've not done a very good job, in my opinion, in our budgets in the past of preparing the city for replacement of our capital items, and we've not done a good job in maintaining them. So this does give direction that we analyze that each year so that it keeps the equipment from becoming obsolete, and we've had some discussions with you all lately about several pieces that have just been in the city but not used because they broke down 10 years ago and no one sent them to auction. So it also talks about asset management and defines what is to be capitalized. Our previous auditor capitalized anything under over $1,000. That is costing a considerable amount of money for the city because everything that's capitalized, the auditors then have to go back and they have to track it back and show a paper trail, and $1,000 today doesn't buy a water heater. So it'd be my recommendation that you all move that to $5,000. That is a closer, more efficient with the time use of money. I think when Mr. Spoor did that or started that many years ago, $1,000 was applicable. It just hasn't evolved with inflation and the cost of servicing goods. So that would be my recommendation to you all. So that concludes the presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions. I know financial policies can be very dry. They're not the most exciting things in the world, but they are necessary from a variety of standpoints, and as we are in early budget discussions with staff members, and we'll be bringing that to council, I'd really like to see both the policy and the definitions that I've provided you all approved so that we can start implementing all of the things that you see in there and making sure a lot of it's already being done, but making sure we're kind of continuing to improve the process as it relates to the budget.
Very thorough. Appreciate it.
And do you need direction on anything for this?
No, ma'am. This is unless you have questions or want to provide something like fund balance days and what you think you'd like to see that at and other, I can certainly bring it back during some of our budget discussions, but this is kind of the high-level view of what we're looking at. This was originally a 45-page document that I cut down to eight because larger cities have a far more complex need for things that we are not currently at yet. This will grow as we grow.
Anything else? Let's move along. Resilient Community Block Grant.
Thank you, Mayor. So bringing this to council's attention, we, if you recall, I received direction to apply for this grant, I believe, towards the end of last year, and so we were able to get all of this pulled together, and I would like to take my hat off to Shayna because she is the one who has driven this boat as far as it has gone at this point and got all of the legal notifications put together and in the paper and all of the other notifications and the mailouts done. So I appreciate all of her help in that particular area. Now comes the time that we've had two different firms submit to be a part of this process with us, and you will see that I put beside your table some of the documentation as it relates to this. And on some of the back two pages, there are some scoring requirements. So we need to submit or we need to establish a set of folks who can score these and give us a recommendation as to which of the two firms to go with. So I don't know if that's something that council would like to serve in some capacity, or would you like to see if there are community volunteers who would like to look at some of this with a staff liaison and score this? What is the direction or the pleasure of the council on selecting a firm?
Normally had the city administrator and the mayor do it, is that correct? Do you remember? Do you know?
I haven't been a part of that, so I do not know the answer to that question.
I don't know that she would appreciate it, but I would think that Ms. Elaine Priest might be somebody that would be good to score grants. She's got a lot of background.
It seems like when Mrs. Wilson, when she was mayor, and they applied for the block grant, it seems like it was pretty much in your hands, and, you know, they had to determine the finances and that because it was dependent on the median, I believe. Go. Come talk to us.
Generally, most cities, the city administrator, the mayor, the council member just volunteer to do the scoring, and/or two cities' staff members, public, maybe public works, city manager, mayor, or council. It's up to y'all's option. Generally, it's an elected official.
Gotcha. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Loftus.
Do we just need a couple of people? Or do we want three? Have a council member, the mayor, and the city administrator doing it?
That would be fine, as long as it's, we've got four documents, so we would need no more than four, I would think, to score it because that's the number of submittal and proposals that we have or copies therein, and it's not, it's not that complex of a process. It's just I don't want to make the assumption that that is solely my job, so I'm bringing it back to you all for some direction.
Mayor, are you willing to serve in that capacity? Do we have a volunteer?
Mr. Loftus?
I don't know if I'm experienced, but I'll give it a shot if I can.
Thank you.
Then I will reach out and see what time works, and we will get that scored and back to council. It will probably not be ready on the 18th, but I will try and shoot for the next meeting.
All right. Do we need any other action on that?
No, ma'am. I just needed some direction.
Very good. Thank you. All right. Let's go to the next item, number nine, implementing standard operating guidelines. Mr. Robert Grantworth, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to turn this over to Chief Estes.
Back in September 11, 2023, I brought forth to the council about dissolving our volunteer bylaws into SOGs, which is the standard operating guideline. It's just how we operate. Basically, it goes from when you get to work in the morning, what you do, how you do it, how long you do it, how you dress, how you shave. It's everything we do. It's, we're a paramilitary organization, so we need set standards and guidelines. We can't have two sets of them. We currently only have two volunteers right now, which is Michelle, my assistant chief, and Preston, which works for Row Road. He's here off and on. Right now, he's in Nebraska for a month and a half, so we wanted to see him with Row Road. We currently have seven that's in our fire academy, the graduate actually, but that's the very last night of the academy. Everybody's happy about that. It's a long process. They're all going to graduate. They all passed, so we'll have seven graduate next. On the 20th will be our graduation. And they'll be volunteers at the time, but they will be TCFP certified. What that means is Texas Commission of Fire Protection. They won't be SFFFMA, which is a, state firefighters and fire marshal association, which is what most volunteer departments are. We're currently, as we stand, a combination fire department. We are no longer just a volunteer fire department. We have three paid on-ship people that works A, B, and C ship, myself, full-time, and then we have two volunteers, and we have seven in the academy. So that's how we currently stand as a staff. We have three part-time personnel, and it's hard to keep them. It's hard to do that because there are laws that we go by through the TCFP that regulates that they can only work 500 hours in a year, which comes out to about 36 hours a month is all they can work. But we only pay $15 an hour. That's all we can afford. Most places now are paying $20 or $25 an hour, and they're letting them work over 500 hours a year, which is not law, but that's what other departments choose to do. We choose to follow the law here, so we're not working over that. Plus, it burns them out on other fire departments if they have to work more hours. So that's why we stick to the 500 hours, 36 hours. By doing the SOGs, it just puts everybody under one set of rules. We call them, and vote. It just makes life easier. And they voted on it on September 11. I have a proposal to repeal the wrong fire rescue constitution bylaws and go to SOGs. Michelle, my assistant chief, and I signed this, and the attorney, Mr. Barbin, has it written up under the regulations that he set forth and makes it legal, then we resolve them. That's all I'm asking is that we go fire SOGs. I have the SOGs available. If anybody wants to look at them, it's something that we go by. Like I say, it's just, it's just our guidelines.
One thing I'll add to that, Chief, is council has to finally approve. The volunteer department has made the recommendations, and so they've voted on it. The council has also to approve.
So we have to approve the dissolution of the bylaws and approve the implementation of the SOGs. Is that correct?
Well, the SOGs already exist.
Yeah, SOGs exist. We're going by them right now. We're currently balanced on two sets of laws.
That's kind of the problem. We have two sets of volunteers, and we're working full-time. By dissolving the volunteer, we're both, both sides of the equation.
Okay. Then I make a motion to dissolve the bylaws for the fire department.
I'll say it. No, that was bringing it to the council to ask permission to. I just want to make everybody assured that this is not getting, dissolving the volunteer tiers, it's just putting them into one set of rules. We still have volunteers, still have three part-time, four full-time. That's how we operate. So that's why we consider it a combination. And as a combination part, we can still get grants under the volunteer tax. That helps us. No, the SOGs, I mean, that's just our guidelines. This came up while we were doing our mid-year budget review. Since we only have three part-time, we actually put in for six full, or six part-time, which we never got. We just couldn't get people to do it. Most people now work quite a bit. They want to be home on weekends with their family, so they work during the week, they want to come on the weekends and work. But I do have two people that are interested in something that I came up with a few months ago. I took it to the Texas Fire Chiefs workshop and asked several fire chiefs, I said, has anybody ever thought about putting people on weekends from seven Saturday morning until seven Monday and having a weekend firefighter? So that, I got to say, it's somewhat selfish on my part because I want to have a weekend off every once in a while. It'd be really nice. If I could get a part-time, or not a part-time, there'll be a full-time firefighter on the weekend. That would give Michelle and myself alternating weekends where we can actually plan stuff every day. Plus, the rush fires season's coming up, and we're going to be busy on the weekends because that's for those eight to five people to go learn stuff on the weekends. So that's when we get really busy, is on the weekends. It will cost no more money than what we have in the budget, the budget for the wages that we budget this year was $417,065 as a budget. The new proposed budget is $417,065. It will also raise the three current firefighters since we have no ranking structure right now. We have it on SOGs, but we don't have it in reality. It's hard to get volunteers or part-time people to come in here and not have somebody when I'm not here as the chief to be in charge that, you know, a firefighter being in charge for firefighters is not the thing that you want to do in a fire station. So we have enough money in the budget to hire the 4896, the 48 weekend firefighter that works 96 hours, and also we have enough money to raise the three firefighters up to what the next step would be, be driver operator. That's our next step. Last one just got through school, it's Marcus. We put him through school, and he passed the state test last week, so all three of my firefighters are driver operator certified through TCF. So they can step up to that position. They also have Officer One, they also have a trucker one, which I require to be driver operator. So there wasn't any standard. So they all three qualify for it. We can raise their pay to that level and also have a weekend firefighter starting June 15th. So that'd be four months from now to the next one. Now, granted, not code, yes, we'd have to approve, or y'all would have to approve, that weekend firefighter for the next one. This will get us through the summer with a weekend firefighter, and I've got two internally that really want to do it. One is a contractor, AC contractor, on his days off, so he would rather pick his days through the week, take his family somewhere during the week because he has a very young child, two years old. He said, I got another three to four years left in the board about doing things with her in school. So he said that would work out great for him. I've got a part-timer that works for another department that wants to leave that department and come here full-time. This is the way we can come full-time and still have during the week, work more time somewhere else. So it's not going to cost anything during this, but yes, next year, keep that same slot, it's going to cost the cost of one fire. But we need to have firefighters in the year after any year. There's only one person on a fire truck now, 47 on the record, just doesn't, unsafe or never.
So we've talked about this before through a variety of lenses. In the budget process itself, I would delineate what those costs will be in the coming fiscal year, and we do that analysis to determine if that's something that we can continue to sustain. So it's really a council's direction. My conversations with chief is that we need to keep this budget neutral, which is what this would be for this fiscal year because we've got to make sure that we have all of our. because we've got to make sure that we have all of our priorities outlined. And I think that he's done that, given the timing of when he would implement this position and given the current level of staffing that we have versus what's been allocated in the budget.
So chief, is it just you and the assistant chief working on the weekends?
No, we have one firefighter on the weekends because we have one per shift, A, B, and C shift. They work the 4896. But we don't have the volunteer or the part-timers that want to work on the weekends currently because they work full-time jobs elsewhere and they want weekends to be for families. One of the volunteers that's in our group, he's the person that has the AC that's contracting on his own. So he said, man, that would be right up my alley. I would love to do that. Also paying them 96 hours on a firefighter schedule. Back in the 80s, the government said that a firefighter's work leave is 106 hours, so 52 hours a week. That's regular pay. That's straight. Anything over that, from 106 hours to 120, which is actually a key take. The pay period of five shifts is a pay period for a firefighter. And anyplace you go, that matter if you're 48s or 24s, it doesn't matter. So 16 hours of that 120 hours is time and a half except FLSA overtime. You must pay them that overtime. So working 96, we keep them under that 106, so we save money by not having to pay the FLSA overtime to that firefighter on the weekend. The fire chiefs that I've talked to at the conference, it's like, man, you might be on to something. So we never even thought about that, especially with smaller combination departments. So, like, you know how it works out? I said, well, I hope I did tell you. See how it goes.
Okay, so we need a motion for, a motion to reallocate funds from the part-time positions into this new position that will work the weekend schedule of 4896?
That's it for this agenda. The next one for the drivers, if we're going to do that pay differential, I'll need to put it back on the agenda because we did not properly note it on this one for that.
I still move.
I'll say it.
Hi. I appreciate your creativity.
We appreciate it.
Innovation.
Section 551, 074. Personnel discuss appointment, employment, education, reassignment, duties, discipline, or dismissal of a public officer or employee or hear a complaint or charge against officer or employee in executive session unless officer or employee request a public hearing and it be city secretary. And it is 7:33. We go being into executive session. Wishful thinking. Watch my stuff. Stop.
So we have to approve the dissolution of the bylaws and approve the implementation of the SOGs. Is that correct?
Well, the SOGs already exist.
Yeah, SOGs exist. We're going by them right now. We're currently balanced on two sets of laws.
That's kind of the problem. Two sets of rules. Two sets of volunteers. Both sides of the house. Both sides of the house.
Okay, then I make a motion to dissolve the bylaws for the fire department.
I'll say it.
Hi. I appreciate your creativity.
We appreciate it.
Innovation.
Section 551, 074. Personnel discuss appointment, employment, education, reassignment, duties, discipline, or dismissal of a public officer or employee or hear a complaint or charge against officer or employee in executive session unless officer or employee request a public hearing and it be city secretary. And it is 7:33. We go being into executive session. Watch my stuff.